We are back on the record.
Welcome, everyone. It's now 3:30 PM. It took a little longer than 10 minutes, but we got our questions answered in our executive session. Do you need to make any comment, counselor?
No comment.
We received advice from our counsel according to legal advice. We are now at the main event. We are here to have public hearings, number one. Service plan for the proposed Platte Canyon Health Service District Committee submitted by the Platte Canyon Health Services District Committee. I have an opening statement, if I may. The Board of County Commissioners will now open the public hearing on the continued matter of review of the service plan for the proposed Platte Canyon Health Service District. This matter was heard at a regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners on May 14th, 2025, and continued to today's date. The record of the May 14th, 2025 hearing shall be made a part of the record of this proceeding as well. In addition, the county has received additional written public comments, which have been posted in today's packet and will be made part of the record of this proceeding. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the service plan should be approved by considering the criteria set forth in Colorado revised statutes 32-1-203 print two and print 2.5. As a continuation of the public hearing, the procedure will be as follows. Persons supporting the approval of the service plan may present any evidence supporting approval. Persons opposing the approval of the service plan and any other persons entitled to be heard may present their evidence. The petitioners may then present any rebuttal evidence. The commissioners may then ask questions. The board asks that the parties and witnesses not submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence, or if someone has already made the point that you wish to make, we ask you to simply say so. The chair will also require that all comments be made to the board and there not be any dialogue between the applicant and members of the audience. Persons who participated in the public comment at the May 14th, 2025 hearing will be not, will not be permitted to speak again. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the board or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Hearing none, the petitioner may make a presentation, but I think where we were, to be clear, we were in proponents. We had gone through all the people that were in the meeting on the 14th, and we were in the area of having proponents come up to the podium. So what we have designed for you, we have some signup sheets back on that back table. Those of you who spoke on the 14th, we have a list from our minutes. And in our rules originally on the 14th, you have one bite at the apple and were able to speak. Those who did not speak at the 14th are enabled and encouraged to attend and make their comments. At this time, anyone in support of the Health Service District, we would ask you to sign in so the clerk can keep track of who has appeared before us for the record. And if we have no one in the room, then we will go to those of us with Zoom. If you have comments and the signup sheet is in the back, and I would ask you to do that. Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Mary Ann Waslawski, I'm a resident in the proposed district. Commissioners, you will hear from opponents who say they don't want the district or don't see the need for one, and they do have a right to their perspective. I'm glad they enjoy good health and can access healthcare when they need it, but their individual experience does not negate the pages of documentation in the plan from multiple evidence-based sources, nor does it account for the everyday reality of the health needs for more than 10,000 people. The odds of people benefiting from local healthcare in a population as large as ours are great. For many, we live up here because of the natural beauty of our surroundings. Living in a rural area is not an absolute for going without. When you bought your home, there wasn't a clause in the contract that said you are prohibited from ever having local healthcare. Most of us hope to remain healthy for a long time. We don't want to think about life speed bumps that come unexpectedly in our lives. The serious injury, the cancer diagnosis, heart disease, diabetes, a child with chronic illness, and so on. But life happens. I bet all of us know someone who's been diagnosed with breast cancer, yet only 26% of Park County women on Medicaid ever have a mammogram, an essential screening for detecting breast cancer early enough for treatment to be most effective. Primary care offers life-saving cancer screenings and other screenings as well, as well as disease management in addition to all the unexpected injuries and illnesses life throws at us. People with access to healthcare have greater health outcomes and live longer, healthier lives. This is undeniable. Years ago, we didn't have a school district. We have one now. Highway 43 wasn't always paved. It is now. 10 years ago, there was no high-speed internet, but it's there now. This health district proposal is the continuum of the progress that occurs when a population goes from a few thousand to more than 10,000. As the population grows, the need for community services such as schools, fire, ambulance, sheriff, and healthcare follow. I urge you commissioners and any who oppose this initiative to look at this not from your individual perspective, but from a community perspective. Establishing a health district and clinic will greatly benefit not only those who live here now, but also those who follow us. The Health Service District Plan meets the legal requirements of Colorado Title 32. So the B O C C, we asked for you therefore to approve the plan so it can go to the voters in November and let the people decide.
Thank you, ma'am. Just, just a little housekeeping, bookkeeping for you all. You have three minutes. Joe Keats, our staffer over here, has got reminders for you, 30 seconds and then end, and we want to be able to give everyone your full three minutes. So we just want to make that comment and appreciate that. Anyone else in the room? Barbie, why don't you come on up? Did you sign in, ma'am? Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Barbie McBe. I'm the program director for Rocky Mountain Rural Health here in Fair Play. Rocky Mountain Rural Health is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and we received that in June of 1989. We have a mission to improve the physical and mental health of all Park County residents. In our vision statement, it states that we will support community initiatives that are designed to improve the physical and mental health of the same Park County residents. The Platte Canyon Health Service District's committee's service plan is in direct line with our mission and our vision. I would like to submit to the Board of County Commissioners data read from Rocky Mountain Rural Health Data Management System. This data was collected from my 2024 calendar year activities. This data shows the positive impact that the South Park Health Service District had on its constituents. It also shows the health disparities compared to a health service district and a non-health service district with the residents in the Platte Canyon area. The proposed Platte Canyon Health Service District is home to 9,234 Park County residents. That's per the Park County website. Working with an established health service district, Rocky Mountain Rural Health has had contact with three times the number of residents in South Park that we have in the Platte Canyon area. Without primary care, individuals often seek to get emergency care. That's their option. Emergency visits are exponentially more expensive than the cost of a primary care visit. And an emergency room visit only covers the it doesn't cover the whole body. It doesn't cover the health. Primary care is with Robert Meester Oak. Primary care is where minor illnesses and injuries are treated. Primary care is also where routine physicals and testing occur. These routine testing can reveal chronic illnesses or even detect life-threatening illnesses. Through primary care, disease management and appropriate follow-up continues so that the person can become the healthiest version of themselves. A well-established relationship between a medical practitioner and a patient allows the individual to control their health destiny, not be at its mercy. By allowing the community members of the proposed Health Service District to have a voice in whether this district should be established, please allow them. Give them a chance. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner, for the record, we will add this, if it's okay with you, as exhibit A.
Any objections?
Objections.
We'll add it to the record. Thank you, ma'am. 30, 30 seconds is yellow and red is time, right? That's the color code that Joe has. So just a little trying to put her in, in line of sight with the people at the podium. Welcome. Yes, ma'am. And who are you?
Hi, my name is Karen Quering, and I'm from the Park, Platte Canyon area. And I just wanted to let you know I had lived in the area for 27 years now. It's kind of mind-boggling to me, but I've seen so many of the changes that have occurred in that area since I moved there. I think Mary Kay mentioned a bunch of them, and some of them I've already forgotten because it's been a long time. Anyway, I have seen the needs of our citizens that have increased over the years. And people with chronic illnesses, especially the seniors, because I'm now one. In fact, those needs were the impetus for several of us to get together and start the Seniors Alliance of Platte Canyon, which is a nonprofit. And our mission is to help seniors find resources. We aren't, of course, able to provide them, not many of them anyway, but we'd look for resources and I am lucky that I get to work in the office every week, and I answer the phones and talk to people. And we talk to people not only who are seniors, but people who have chronic illnesses, and they have needs for different kinds of resources. So that's why I really support the health district, because I think it's really needed with all the increases in our population, and it's hard to find resources in rural areas. So that's one of the things I believe strongly in, is to help find more resources, develop more resources in our community. The other thing I wanted to say, I think it's time to move. It's time to let us as citizens vote on this proposal. I know there are opposing views, and there would be, but it's time to let us look at the proposal as a whole community. It's time to let us vote. So I urge the commissioners to allow this to be put on the ballot in November and give us the chance to vote on it. Thank you.
With my green light on. Thank you, ma'am. Have you signed in, please? Thank you. Welcome. And you are?
Hello, I'm Dr. Shawna Farrell.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Shawna Farrell, and I'm a resident of Park County, specifically District Two. Moved it again. Is that better? Okay. I'll do it one more time for you. My name is Dr. Shawna Farrell, and I'm a resident of Park County, specifically District Two. And I've lived in the county now for about three years, and I'm here to support this initiative and your description. I've also been a rural social worker in the state of Colorado for the past 25 years, and specifically my background is in rural work. And I've seen an increased need for service delivery in rural communities. And after looking at the opponent's perspective on dismissing Bailey for needs around these issues around healthcare, it brought me to this place. I don't like seeing our own communities say that we don't need something unless we ask them. Part of the reason I'm here as well is that we need to put this on the ballot for folks to decide. We are a rural health district at this point. Truly believe that. If we have to go to Conifer to get services or come to Fair Play to get services, it's just, to me, it's just not, it's a fairness issue as well. So I just want to implore the commissioners to consider, please at least put this on the ballot. This is a bottom-line issue for me. It's whether or not you're a pro or opposed. Just put it on the ballot so that citizens can decide. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Anyone else would like to speak in, in support? Welcome.
I'm going to kind of approach this from a different angle. It'll make sense in the end.
That's great. And you are, sir, your name?
I'm Jim Allen. I'm an retired lieutenant colonel from US Army, and I live in Bailey. In my early life, I spent over 30 years as an army nurse, a veterinary nurse practitioner. I served in the US Army Nurse Corps during the Vietnam War.
Sir, could I just interrupt you a little bit to put, there you go, put the microphone right over to you. That's better.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
I served in the Army Nurse Corps during the Vietnam War. In one month, the US Army mobilized two 1,000-bed hospitals and a 500-bed hospital in Japan. Coincidentally, my 1,000-bed hospital, nurses, doctors, and staff, the size of Walter Reed, met and formed up in Denver and deployed to Tokyo together in December 19th, 1965, just before Christmas. We began to receive patients almost immediately. All wounded soldiers out of the Vietnam came through US Army hospitals in Tokyo. A third of the Vietnam wounded care came through my hospital. I was there from 1965 to 1968. Our mission was to conserve the fighting strength, if you can imagine, and return them to Vietnam. Those who could not be healed in 90 days were returned to the US. I took care of hundreds and hundreds of them. The soldiers had amputations, many multiple gunshot wounds, charred wounds, and open contaminated wounds. In January of 68, Tet Offensive occurred in Vietnam. 2,100 were killed, 13,000 wounded. In the first 48 hours, 350 of them came through our hospital. Many of them still in battle crossings right out of the field. They flew by air to us. What I learned in caring for these soldiers was they believed they were fighting for freedom and democracy. They believed, and some died, many died. They believed in the right to vote, and that's what I'm focusing on today. I am going to talk about your responsibility to promote the common good for the citizens of this community, and specifically about the proposed healthcare district. The district that you have once refused to put on the ballot for us to vote on. This committee has worked tirelessly to dot every i and cross every t to meet the statutory stipulations to merit this moving on to the ballot. You have heard the testimony stories of many enough to know how desperate the healthcare is and for 10,000 residents in Meara County. And the need for a healthcare district is a no-brainer. It would cost the county practically nothing. To move this onto the ballot so that the voters can decide is democracy. According to your strategic plan, healthcare is recognized as efficient in our area. The committee has identified our area as a healthcare desert. Also, in your recent letter to President Trump, you stated, "We believe in the voice of our citizens." So let's get it happening, okay? Let's let the citizens in this health district vote. Even in this forgotten war of Vietnam, 59,000 soldiers died and over 600,000 wounded. Do not let the sacrifices of our nation's soldiers be forgotten.
Pardon me, sir, your time is up.
For this country, for democracy, and for the right to vote. Don't let them down.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for Health Service District in the audience? I don't see anybody else. We do have four hands online, and I guess we will go through those.
And Mr. Chair, may I suggest that Joe come up to the podium? Because anyone on Zoom will be able to see the color signs up on the podium, so they'll know as their time is proceeding. I will ask the first person, Rob Green, I'll ask you to unmute.
Thank you for the opportunity. The reason why I am not, I am a resident of Bailey, and I am also a member of the Health Service District committee that's looking to bring healthcare to, to the Platte Canyon area. I'm not there today because I am at home on oxygen due to living at 9,000 feet. Being a member of the committee, I had not had a personal experience with our lack of healthcare in the Platte Canyon area until about a month ago, actually about six weeks ago. I had a cough for about two weeks, which at times could be bad, at times it went away. My doctor is in downtown Denver, so it would take about an hour to get there. And I tried over-the-counter medicines to treat my cough. Apparently, the over-the-counter cough medicine did not work. I had a coughing fit at 12:30 at night on a Friday night. I was coughing so hard, and I was out of oxygen, which caused me to pass out, hit my head on the kitchen counter, get a lovely cut with blood all over my face. We had to go drive to Swedish Hospital at 1:00 in the morning, where they determined, and I thought we were going so I could get my cut sewed up, but apparently my cough was pneumonia and the beginning of sepsis, all which could have been prevented if there had been a place here in Bailey for us to go and have my cough checked out. Upon being released from the hospital, I had stitches in my head. I was told I had to get those stitches out between five and seven days after leaving the hospital. I was released from the hospital on a Monday. On Tuesday was the day that STRIDE comes. They only come once a week, so I was not able to hit STRIDE that week. The following week on the Tuesday was too long. I actually had to go to my neighbor who is a retired doctor to have him take my stitches out, or I too would have had to go down the hill to have my stitches on. I was in the hospital the first time, and I was there, I had to stay an extra day because my oxygen levels weren't high enough to be released. They told me that once it was, I could go, but I needed to talk to my medical provider in Bailey for them to determine that I needed oxygen at this altitude. I then had to go back to the hospital on Thursday. Something happened again, and I spent the night in the hospital this time in St. Joe's. And the medical, again, they wanted to release me with no oxygen because they wanted me to go to a medical provider in the Bailey area that could demonstrate that I needed oxygen. No one could believe that anywhere in Bailey, Pine, Shawnee, that there was not a medical profession. I just finished having a telehealth with my pulmonologist. And I was telling her about this meeting and the fact that I was on the committee to help bring healthcare services to Platte Canyon.
Pardon me, sir, your three minutes are up.
Okay, she has lots of patients here, and she wants to have healthcare here to help her patients. So let the voters decide on what they want. You may personally disagree with it, but there's 10,000, over 10,000 people here who will disagree.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
All right, I will ask Patty Newman to unmute and to let everybody know when their time is up. I'll give you a couple of seconds, and then I will mute you. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is, my name is Patty Newman. I too live in Bailey in the Platte Canyon District. I too am one of the seniors who moved here and found out that we couldn't get medical care in Conifer because they would not accept Medicare. And myself and my husband drive to Denver at least once a week for medical care, blood tests, x-rays, whatever. So I think that you've had a lot of speakers who have really addressed the fact of need, and I think the need is there. There are people who disagree, and that's fine. But what I would like to suggest is that you simply give us the right to vote. When I tell people what is happening, they can't believe it. They can't understand how three county commissioners could deny 10,000 residents the right to have an issue on the ballot. Please respect our democracy and put the issue on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Right, I will ask Beth Anne to unmute and give us your full name, please.
Hi, my name is Beth Anne Engelkes, and I actually am wanting to speak in opposition to this going on the ballot. Should I wait?
Yeah, why don't you keep your hand up, and we'll go through the other two, and then
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for disclosing that, ma'am.
All right, Heidi Winter, I will ask you to unmute.
Hi, yeah, Heidi Winter. I, I know that the state has put a process in place for people to vote. Certainly, you have no intention of taking this vote away from us, and we voted to put you into office, but we still have a vote. And this is something that needs to be decided by the people. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments.
Right, I will ask Louise Peterson to unmute.
Yes, Louise Peterson in Goffey. This isn't going to be on my ballot, but it seems like a no-brainer to me. 10,000 people without healthcare. There's a Health Service District in Fair Play that's working very well. It just seems like the right thing to do to give the people a chance to vote, so I hope you put it on the ballot.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, and I will ask Kim, Kim's iPhone to unmute. Oh, okay, your hand is up to let you know. That's all right. I'll, I'll put your hand down. How's that?
It's okay. You're fine. Anyone else in the room in support? Anyone else online in support? If not, we'll go ahead and open up the floor. If you have signed up for in opposition in the room. We'll let you sign in. It's so the clerk can keep a record of who is appearing before us with your, with your name and so forth. Welcome.
Gary Fisk, combined junction. There is no need for a tax-supported health services district, but there may be a need for a nonprofit or private health service. Boosters presented endless statistics last month but failed to make their case. Need is best shown not by statistics, but by actual clients walking through the door as STRIDE community is now doing with the health service they have started. STRIDE has been operating a medical bus at the Bailey Public Library the last four months. STRIDE has committed to expanding hours as demand increases, never asking for local tax support.
No comments, please.
A letter from the current longtime business director of the Conifer Medical Center strongly supports STRIDE. She said STRIDE saves the voters of Bailey from reinventing the wheel. And she said a lot of other things. Two, property tax elections, I repeat, property tax elections are in the future if, at the option of the directors, and if the district is approved, another first lien and increasing unaffordability of housing. Financial discipline is lacking because there will be no taper spending limit, and the first chance to dissolve the failing district is a sunset clause in 10 years, 10 years. Three, most of the sales tax we pay by local Three, most of the sales tax we pay by locals, not tourists. Locals who buy at Amazon or online appliances, furniture, home remodeling materials, and vehicles. Four, inability to drive to the western suburbs is the exception, not the rule. Many retirement age residents do not want to change their doctors and they are very glad to have specialists only forty-five minutes away. A general practitioner close by cannot replace a specialist. We are glad to have two eighty-five as our lifeline. Five, the district is likely to fail. Business risk will be hidden by tax subsidies. Many private, most private businesses fail. Business risks are too few clients, inability to attract and keep doctors due to worsening shortages, unmet promises from boosters, grossly underestimated building costs, slow and declining Medicaid reimbursements, and very expensive liability insurance. Incredibly, the plan does not address these existential risks, but the heck with the details. The average voter does not have time to investigate risk, but the B O C C does and should not place this train wreck before the voters. The district still refuses, like last year, to provide detail, but implies, and we've heard today, they imply twenty-four-seven care, a hospital essentially on a one percent sales tax. Again, heck with the details. Let's not pass the bill to find out what is in the bill. Seven, Stride is ignored by the senior alliance and the district, who still say we live in a health care desert. Stride is supported by the practical minds at the Bailey Chamber of Commerce. The county has advertised Stride. Finally, Stride takes all insurances, Medicaid, Medicare, veterans, and those without insurance. No one is turned away because of inability to pay, and again, no one is turned away because of inability to pay. Stride is a rare gift. Please stick with Stride and say no to the district.
Your time's up. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi.
And you are?
I am Cindy Scher from Bailey. I'm here to speak against the Platte Canyon Health Service District proposed for ballot consideration by this Board of County Commissioners. I believe that this proposed Health Service District shall be denied being placed on the ballot based on this from CRS thirty-two dash one two oh three two A, sufficient and existing need. The current needs of this district are being met by Stride, which is a well-established five oh one C three nonprofit that is federally qualified health center. Stride provides a medical clinic bus to our community once a week for four hours. Additionally, it should be denied access based on these two comments from Bailey constituents. A written comment from Mark Laney that was submitted as public comment to the B O C C, beginning in February of twenty twenty-five. Stride made a commitment in concert with Park County's Library District to provide health care in Bailey every Tuesday. Stride brings a fully equipped mobile medical facility that includes two examination rooms. Stride has worked hard to provide constant health care services to the Bailey community. The comment further states in conversations with Stride administrators, they have indicated that if the demand is present, Stride will increase its once weekly presence to the community to two, three, four, and five days. In addition, Stride has clearly indicated that if the demand warrants it, they would consider a bricks and mortar permanent facility in our community. Furthermore, from community citizen Heather Laney Spidel, I spoke with Tatiana Pardo Torres, the Community Engagement Specialist, Debbie Bauer, the Patient Consumer Experience Coordinator, and Allison Dreher, the Business Development and Value-Based Contract Manager of Stride, and they want to come here more often. Stride is committed to continuing these efforts to eventually create a permanent home for themselves here in Bailey. This is a private entity that is already set up to cover this type of need. These efforts should not be undermined by an attempt to set up a government entity that wants to impugn a regressive tax on its constituents. Additionally, this should not be allowed on the ballot because of the misinformation provided in the application. As an example, the twenty twenty-five Strategic Master Plan is cited multiple time in the application, yet it points to a draft version of the Strategic Master Plan that was not adopted nor does it currently exist. The application falsely states that Stride is not accepting new patients. Regarding the Stride bus that is now serving the Bailey area, the application erroneously states that they are not expanding care. The application includes a budget that expenses Tabor reserves every year. This is not how you appropriately deal with Tabor reserves in a budget. The budget should be considered inaccurate at best. Respectfully, please do not approve this application for the ballot. The application has not demonstrated need and is full of misinformation. Please let Stride have the time to create a base here in our community and say no to allowing this question to be published on the ballot. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. People in opposition in the room. Welcome.
I'm Brenda Borton from Bailey. The previous comments cover a lot and I believe are absolutely true. Originally, when we moved to Park County, we had property in Jefferson. And we absolutely loved South Park. But we realized that we liked the conveniences of being so much closer to Denver and the suburbs. So we moved to Bailey because it's a beautiful combination of best of both worlds. Close enough to the city and suburbs to meet all our needs, but far enough away into the hills to feel the peace and tranquility that our souls crave. I can no longer live independently, if I can no longer live independently, I will have to leave this little slice of heaven. It'll break my heart, but I will never expect future generations to be burdened by my lack of planning or common sense. Rural America is not geared for convenience. It is suited for rugged individualism. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Anyone else in the room? Okay, we do have two hands, or three hands with Beth Anne. Beth Anne, you had come on earlier as an opponent. I would ask you to unmute.
All right, I'll ask you to unmute.
And muted, then she went back to mute.
There I am. I'm gonna, okay. All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm here to respectfully request that you do not support this plan that places a one percent sales tax increase on the November ballot to fund the proposed Platte Canyon Health Service District. We currently pay three point nine percent in sales tax. If voted in, this would increase our sales tax to four point nine percent, a twenty point five percent increase from our current sales tax. After thoroughly reviewing the April first service plan, I believe this proposal is deeply flawed, misleading, and not in the best interest of our broader Park County community. Let's be clear. This plan is designed to fund a single clinic in Bailey serving only the Platte Canyon area. Yet, it proposes a sales tax that would disproportionately affect all residents, including those outside the service area, with little to no benefit in return. The burden will fall hardest on working families and small local businesses who can least afford it. From the retirees ordering supplies for their businesses to supplement their retirement income, to the parents and children buying lumber to build a chicken coop or a home business. This tax would touch nearly everything they buy, and for what? A clinic that might only be open a few days a week doesn't provide trauma or urgent care and will refer most patients down the hill anyway. This plan uses data that conflates the needs of all Park County residents with those of Bailey alone. It talks about population growth and aging demographics, but much of the data reflects countywide statistics, not the current realities of the Platte Canyon area. In fact, longtime residents know school enrollment has declined in recent years, which contradicts the notion that our population here is growing. We're told there's no care available, but Conifer Medical School Center, they do accept Medicare, is scheduled to accept new patients this summer. And Stride Clinic already runs a van to Bailey and has expressed willingness to expand hours if there's a real demand. That's far more responsive and less costly than creating an entirely new tax district. The proponents claim the clinic will reduce EMS calls, but that's simply not accurate. This facility is not an urgent care or an ER. It will not reduce trauma calls or transport needs and may duplicate or interfere with services already provided by our existing fire and ambulance districts. Finally, this ballot measure would be expensive and divisive. The plan is vague on costs, relies on speculative funding sources like grants and donations, and offers no concrete guarantees on what services will actually be available, when, or how often. In short, there may be some residents that would benefit from a local clinic, but this plan and this twenty point five percent increase in sales tax from the current three point nine we pay to four point nine percent, that has a ten-year sunset clause, are not the answer. It's not ready, it's not fair, and it's not needed right now. Please vote no on placing this tax on the ballot by rejecting the service plan. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time was up just a minute ago, but we appreciate it. Beth Anne, what's your last name? What's your last name?
Engelkess.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, and Kim's iPhone still has a hand up and that's a no, correct? Okay, all right. Next up, I will ask Heather Pruitt to unmute.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thanks for giving me a few minutes to talk. I just want to say that I support the individuals who have said that there just really hasn't, we don't have a need for this clinic here in this area. I also want to focus on another provision of the statute that provides for the Board of County Commissioners to disapprove the service plan. If evidence is not presented that demonstrates the creation of this special district will be in the best interest of the area proposed to be served. I know that the service plan indicates there's fourteen and a half percent of the population uses Medicaid and twenty-two point seven percent of the population is over sixty-five and therefore eligible for Medicare. That, these do not indicate a need for health insurance. Rather, this just tells us the population that is getting health insurance subsidized with tax dollars. And so now the Health District Committee is asking the local population to provide additional subsidies for health care. The Health Service District contemplates receiving fifty-three point two percent of its funding from sales tax revenue. Sales tax is a regressive tax. That means the poorest in our community will pay a larger portion of their income to support this district. Many, more than one of the members of this Health District Committee have property with values close to and in excess of a million dollars. Why are they requesting for a sales tax to be utilized to subsidize health care instead of ad valorem taxes? How is that in the best interest of our community, to have the poorest among us pay the highest portion of their income to additionally subsidize the cost of health care? And we all know that we will be all paying the sales taxes based on our online orders and other items that are taxable, including our telephone, our cell phones, any large appliances that are delivered to our homes, cleaning supplies, including soaps, detergent, paper products, and food that is packaged so as to be eaten in a store is also taxable. Once the tax subsidizes building and personnel are established, then private businesses, either profit or nonprofit, won't be able to compete with this. So again, how is that in the best interest of our community to shut out potential future growth? And then also, based on the current proposed budget, the committee is requesting this one percent sales tax and then projecting a surplus of almost one point five million in the first two years. This indicates to me that there is not enough demand, because the resources aren't going to be used to provide services. Otherwise, they would be using all of those funds to get services. I know the committee is trying to model after the district in the South Park, but we are a very different community. We don't have, my time's up. We don't have.
Finish, finish your thought.
We don't have the incorporated town to support us. So in conclusion, I just respectfully request that the Commissioners reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. We have a couple of people on Zoom, yeah?
I will ask Kim to unmute. Kim's iPhone?
Hey.
It was a different person.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm here. Sorry, you guys can hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed. You have three minutes.
Thank you. So yeah, I stand in opposition of this Health Service District being put on the ballot. So the first thing I would say is, in order to get anything on the ballot, as far as I understand, you submit a petition for that. That's required for X amount of signatures in order to get something on the ballot. So whatever that number of signatures is, there has been no petition that I know of, and you guys could correct me if I'm wrong, petition signatures to get this on the ballot. So they're coming to you in order for you guys to override a petition or like there's no petition in order for you to put it on the ballot. And so it's confusing to me in that if you have enough support, if these people that are in, that want this on the ballot have enough support, then they should easily be able to collect, say, four hundred, eight hundred signatures, whatever that is, in order to get an issue on the ballot. That's what anyone would have to do. And so to come to you, to ask you to just put it on without those petition signatures, that's just, doesn't seem correct, or even like why they would be asking you, not showing you that they have that much support in the first place. The second thing is, I don't think the government should have a hand in our health care in this way at all, and definitely that we should not be funding it in taxpayer money. We already have a health district in Fair Play that is very underutilized. Whoever spoke before is saying that it is highly successful. I think there's something like four patients a day that are seen. Like, how is that supposed to, you know, fund anything? And I don't know why health care practitioners would even be, you know, signing up to be doing that little of care. I know we service a less population here. It just doesn't seem like something we should be paid for. Our budget should be completely balanced at the county level before we're taking on any extra spending. And I would not approve any tax at this point, honestly, for anything, because we have such high taxes right now. So I stand in opposition of you guys putting this on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments.
She needs to introduce herself. She didn't.
Your last name, ma'am?
I just asked you to unmute so you can give us your name.
Yeah, Kimberly Gregory, sorry.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, I will ask Joyce H. to unmute.
Joyce, would you give us your name, please?
Yes, my name is Joyce Hines and I am a resident of Bailey. I'm also a registered nurse and I have owned and operated two businesses within the medical field. So I'm going to come at this from a little bit different perspective because I agree with what's been shared here in light of a lot of the financial concerns of this clinic. But one of the things I want to mention is that even though Platte Canyon Health Service District plan addresses a clear need for improved health care access in our area, this plan faults lie in the optimistic financial projections, lack of detailed contingency plans, and insufficient strategies for transportation, service expansion, public support. And these gaps are going to hinder, in my opinion, not help grow health care in this particular area. And one of the things, as I look at this proposal, in one of the agendas titled Proposed Platte Canyon Health Service District Timeline, there is a little asterisk at the bottom that states, "Any provider coming from a clinic within a certain mile radius," and it just says, "Will depend on that current clinic contract, may be bound by a non-compete clause for a duration of the time." I don't know how you make that any more vague, but my concern is, does, we, I, as many have spoken of Stride, is this inadvertently going to prevent Stride from coming up into our area if they approve this particular clinic? Now, the other thing concerning Stride is on page fifteen of their proposal, they state, "Conifer Stride is no longer accepting new patients at their location." That is not true. I called Stride this afternoon and asked if I could make a new patient appointment and they said, yes, of course. I said, is there any problem with getting new patients into this clinic? They said, no, we're accepting new patients. So I don't know who they would have spoken to, but that is an inaccurate comment. The plan intends to contract, as is noted in their, excuse me, in their budget, I believe it's on page twenty. I believe it's on page 23, that they intend to contract with the healthcare provider for clinic operations, but states that if an unacceptable arrangement cannot be negotiated, the district will hire its own staff, physicians, nurses, et cetera.
Ma'am, your time is up, I apologize.
That's okay. Well, thank you, and I just encourage this not to hit the vote until these things are addressed.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all I see on Zoom. Commissioner Mitchell, did you have anybody that I don't see?
No other hands up? You might want to make a last call. A couple of people had just logged in.
We are taking people who wish to speak in opposition to the Proposed Health Service District Plan. That's the area and the agenda that we are on. Is there anyone else in the room or online that would like to speak in opposition to the proposed plan? See no one. There is one?
There is one.
Excuse me?
There is, I just, it just came up.
Right, I will ask David S. to unmute.
And what's your last name, please?
Uh, David Swain?
Welcome and proceed.
All right, I would just like to speak in opposition to it. For one, I don't think that the taxpayers should be paying for this. I think that the private sector could take care of it if there was really a need. I'd like to say too, that, you know, we've all moved into and lived in the area knowing that there was no, you know, healthcare facilities there. And it's a choice we make when we live there. And if, you know, if we can't continue, then we shouldn't expect everybody else to carry our burden. And I think that, you know, we all are paying enough in taxes. Property taxes are going up, homeowners insurance. The last thing we need is another, another drain on our already struggling finances. So I think if there really was a need there that the private sector would be able to meet that need and the fact that, you know, the private sector can't make money at it, it's a pretty good indication that there's, there's not enough of a need there. And obviously, there's other, other options too, like Stride and things of the sort. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. We see one more hand. Tracy Edstrom?
I'll ask you to unmute.
Thank you, commissioners. I am Tracy Edstrom. I reside in Fair Play of Park County. And I agree, I did come in late, so I apologize that I did not hear all of the arguments. But I, I do agree with the comments made by Kimberly, Joyce, and David that, and particularly David's comments about taxpayers funding, funding this kind of a project for such a localized part of our county. And I do feel like this is limiting to those of us who use alternative care. I am a classical homeopath. I can't even tell you the last time I saw a medical doctor. And, and, you know, if I were to need urgent care, then a clinic-
Point of privilege, point of privilege. Can we keep it down in the audience? I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, so basically, I just, I just feel like there are, it takes money from persons who might, like, I might need to fund an alternative care. And if I had to go to the hospital, it would have to be a hospital, not a clinic anyways. So I, I don't think we should be raising taxes to do this, is my point.
Thank you for that. That's the only one that, we have no one now on Zoom. Anyone left in the room? Comments in opposed? If any of you came in late, anyone who would like to comment in support of this that we have not heard from so far? Haven't seen anybody, I just wanted to give that offer. Would you like to come up, ma'am? Well, yeah, we're going to allow rebuttal. Yes, ma'am. We're just getting through the public comment, and then the district-
I believe the rebuttal is only for those that are presenting this as the district goes.
Yeah, so I would ask Mr. Wood. There's Dylan. How would you, when we get to rebuttal? Well, I think it has to be the representative of the committee.
Correct.
Would you like to speak? We will give you that opportunity, please. Welcome, who are you? They're having a hard time hearing you. On the base of the microphone?
Okay, is that better?
That's better, very much, thank you.
Okay, um, some of the things I heard, I moved here to Bailey 11 years ago, and I couldn't get into Conifer, so I went to Evergreen. And, which is a kind of a pain in the butt to get there all the time. I'm not sure if I would change my doctor, but if there'd been resources available in Bailey, I certainly would have signed up there. There will be more people moving in for sure, and then they will have that option of having a clinic there that they can go to instead of going down the hill. Someone talked about the sunset 10 years. I think that's a perfectly reasonable amount of time to allow for a project to mature and to succeed. And someone thought that it was destined to fail. I'm not sure why that would be, since the, given the fact that the Fair Play Clinic has had some pretty good success from what I hear. I also heard the viewpoint that when you get old, just go somewhere else to die. So I don't subscribe to that at all, because, you know, I want to stay here. And it's not only old people who have health problems anyway. Pretty much everyone has that sometime or another. So as far as going somewhere else to die, no, I'm not for that one. And, uh, let's see, what else did I have? I've just been making notes on all of this. Oh, and, well, the rebuttal will probably take care of this, but I don't think that countywide funds are being used for this at all. I don't, didn't think that that was in the works. And the person who was a homeopath, that's, you know, that's good, but not too many people fall into that category either. I think more people are in the traditional medical plan. And I called Stride today, and they said they had no plans for expanding. I called Conifer Medical this afternoon, and they do take Medicare, they do not take Medicaid, and they're not taking any new patients in Conifer right now. So that's the situation that we have right now. We, and as far as the taxation, which is what I hear a lot, that's what the vote's for. If you don't, you know, we should vote on it, and if you're against the tax, then you vote against it. But that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Anyone else from the room? We have one more. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Emmy West, and I am here as a citizen of Bailey and a board member for Stride. And I just wanted to make a comment that a lot of people have been making quotes on behalf of Stride today, and none of those messages or comments have been approved by Stride, by the Board of Directors. So Mr. Linay and Ms. Sheriff don't speak for Stride. So I just wanted to make sure that was made clear for the record today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? Okay.
I move a closed public comment.
I'll second that.
Turn my green light off. That's a proper motion and second to close public comment. Is there any further discussion? All the question, those in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 Oh, same sign, okay, we have closed public comment. Now, I think, Counselor, we are in the realm of rebuttal. And how, how does the committee wish to handle that, Mr. Wood?
Can you, can you speak about that on the microphone, please?
Is that on?
Dylan Woods, attorney for the petitioners, will be having a bifurcated approach to the rebuttal period. We'll have actual presentation from the original presenters, and then I will follow a legal wrap-up. It's my understanding that there will also be a Q and A section. We'll address the Q and As as is appropriate for each member.
Okay, any, any questions or objections? Appreciate it, thank you for that. Who would like to go first?
Kim is first, but-
Mr. Peterson?
There is no hand up now.
Sheriff?
Oh, I need to, are you logged into the Zoom?
Yes, I am.
Under Kim's iPhone. So we had two Kim's iPhone, that's interesting. Well, we'll see if this is Kim, the one we need. I will set you up as a co-host.
That is not her last name, by the way.
iPhone's not her last name? Okay.
It's not. Well, I set you up as a co-host, but is your, is it your computer tagged as Kim's iPhone?
Chair.
Okay, there we go. Okay, you should be able to co-host now, you should be able to share.
Technology is really good when it works.
Yes, it is.
When it works. For those of you in Zoom land, we're just trying to get the connections here so we can give them a co-host facility.
There you go.
There we go, here we are, there we go.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Peterson from Bailey, and I am introducing the rebuttal comments for the Platte Canyon Health Service District Committee. Though we presented the plan in detail on May 14th, we're back again today to ask the commissioners to approve the proposal for the ballot so the voters can decide for themselves. It's important to clarify that the B O C C is not responsible for approving or denying the creation of a district. That decision belongs to the registered voters who live within the boundaries of the proposed district. The Colorado General Assembly recognized special districts as a form of local government in 1949. There are more than 40 of these health districts across rural Colorado. Many have been around for decades, such as Garfield County since 1961 and Kiowa County since 1965. Some are more recent, such as the one in Fair Play since 2017. It's important to clarify that the B O, the B O C C's role is to review the submitted service plan to ensure it complies with the requirements set forth in statute that govern the formation of special districts. A health service district plan is not a clinic business plan. Under statute, a citizen-led committee substitutes a basic plan showing need and feasibility for a district, not line-by-line ongoing budgetary items. We're here today to review the statute criteria that determines that need and feasibility and how it would help the Platte Canyon area. Criteria one involves the need for the services area. It's important to note the data on this slide does not come from this committee. It was collected from existing government documents, such as Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments, which Park County is part of, the U.S. Census Bureau, and the CHAPS documents. The proposed district is home to more than 60% of Park County residents. Bailey alone has four times the population of Fair Play and Alma combined, and is the fastest-growing region in a county that grew from approximately 16,000 in 2010 to nearly 18,000 just a few years ago. Our population is aging, 56% of the residents are over 45, and nearly a quarter are over 65. 11% are disabled, more than 10% are veterans. Seniors aged 75 and over are expected to double by 2030, increasing the Medicare reliance and local healthcare needs. We have already been identified as a designated health professional shortage area and a medically underserved population by both state and federal agencies. The U. Path Health Service District, which exists in the southern part of the county, claims that 58% of their mental health costs last year originated from Bailey. The Parks County CHAPS Plan, your 2025 strategic master plan, and various community surveys confirm that healthcare access is one of the top three concerns. Criteria two is, is that service currently is inadequate. Conifer Family Medical Center does not accept Medicaid, accepts only limited Medicare, and is currently at capacity for all insurances. Stride has a very limited presence in services in Bailey one day a week, just four hours, and Conifer two days a week, and will not commit in writing to expanding service in the Bailey area. The committee has reached out to Stride for confirmation of their intentions in Platte Canyon multiple times, and has never received a definitive response despite the comments made earlier this afternoon. Various employees at Stride have given different responses to different inquiries, and none of those come from the Board of Stride itself. Criteria three is that we are capable of providing economical and sufficient services. The initial focus will be to bring full-time, fully-functioning primary healthcare services by contracting with a healthcare provider and financially assisting in the opening and maintaining of a clinic with telehealth, lab, and radiology capabilities. It is intended that pharmacy services will be added as soon as financially feasible. Funding will primarily come from patient fees, insurance reimbursements, grants, and foundations. Subject to voter approval, the district would be partially funded through a 1% sales tax within just the district. This sales tax would exclude essentials such as food, heat fuels, utilities, and vehicle fuel. It should be noted, this proposal takes no funds from any existing other budget, such as the sheriff or the general fund, and is not accessible to any other county entity to use. The funds are strictly under the control of the district's own board. Criteria four is that we will have the financial ability to take care of indebtedness. It should be noted, this Platte Canyon District Plan has no property tax and no debt proposed, and does not contemplate any immediate bond issues. The success of the South Park Clinic demonstrates our district would be capable of funding the clinic as revenues grow. Criteria five is compliance with a water quality plan. This criteria does not even apply, because we will be using existing facilities in the Bailey business area, most likely a previous clinic space which is still available. And criteria six are quality assurance measures. Once established, this district and its Board of Directors will be subject to reporting, filing, and other accounting, accountability measures required by law. A five-member unpaid elected board will govern the district. The members will be chosen in November to serve staggered four-year terms as Colorado law requires. The district's initial clinic could be located in an existing spa- The district's initial clinic could be located in an existing space in the Crow Hill Business Area, which offers accessibility, utilities and safe access via the Highway two eighty-five stoplight or the overpass on County Road seventy-two. The district will collaborate with any local entities such as Park County's government, the fire district and the local school district with any formal agreements necessary and those agreements will be handled by the elected board once the district is formed. I'll be followed by Kim.
Okay, so that kind of walks through the criteria. We've shown how this plan meets those, the criteria to move forward. But more than checking boxes, what we want to do right now is talk a little bit about why we're doing this. What success looks like when we've invested in local healthcare. So the way we've done that is kind of look forward. Let's look forward ten years. In the Platte Canyon Health Service District is the heartbeat of our mountain community, bringing care close to home, easing stress, cutting gas costs from all the trips we have to make down the hills and giving residents back time or wages that they've lost by having to take that time off and peace of mind. A new parent doesn't have to make that white-knuckle drive down icy mountain roads when the baby won't stop crying. A teen gets help for anxiety before it comes a crisis. A widow with chronic condition is no longer isolated. She's cared for, close to home. When a child falls ill at school, help is just minutes away rather than hours of lost work. Any older, and older adults can age in place safely with dignity surrounded by the community they love. Health is better, chronic issues are managed better, fewer workdays are missed, mental health care is normal and accessible. E M E, EMS resources are no longer stretched, even has an impact on our housing market in that this home is in the Platte Canyon Health District, becomes a selling point by real estate agents. In this quiet corner of the Rockies, we want to build something extraordinary, a healthier, safer, more connected community where people know that no matter what happens, they're not alone.
Sure.
This map shows the boundaries of the proposed district. Come back. That would have, that could have happened.
Sorry, Charlotte.
So this, this map, um, mirrors the, um, Platte Canyon School District RE one boundaries and that is the district that, um, we're proposing for this health service district as well as the taxing areas, which means not taxing outside of this area. So commissioners, Dave Whistle, Amy Mitchell, Jason Gummer. In closing, we respectfully remind the board that your role today is not to approve or deny the creation of the Platte Canyon Service District itself, but simply to determine whether this proposal meets the legal requirements outlined in the Colorado statute in order for us to move to the next step, a public vote. We've done the work. We've followed the law. Now we ask you to let the voters decide. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. As I said earlier, my name is Dylan Woods and I am counsel for the petitioners in this process. I'd like to address some of the issues that have been raised by public comment, specifically as they pertain to my area of expertise, uh, the law. So as a general matter of background, uh, I am in private practice and part of my practice is representing local governments, including fire protection districts, water and sanitation districts, other special districts. Uh, in this case, I don't represent the district because the district hasn't been formed yet, but I do represent the petitioners. I don't represent Platte Canyon Fire Protection District, but I'm familiar with the workings of, uh, fire protection districts, including those that provide EMS services. And one of the comments that I'd like to make, um, specifically regarding health service districts is that the formation and approval process for health service districts is slightly different from those of other special districts. So Title thirty-two, Article one, Section two oh two provides for the approval process of special districts generally. Article nineteen lays out the guidelines for health service district, service plans specifically. So, um, your approval process is pursuant to two oh two under Article one. Service plan itself is a little different than normal service plans. And previous members of the petitioner party have already gone through the two oh two denial criteria. But I wanted to reflect on the statutory scheme general. So Board of County Commissioners is authorized, in fact mandated, to deny a service plan approval if it fails to meet those delineated. You're authorized, you're permitted in your discretion to deny it if it meets the subsequent criteria. But there isn't a criteria by which you must approve. You know, um, sort of counterintuitively, that really reflects an intent on the part of the legislature toward leniency in approval of service plans. Because you have limited criteria on which to deny it, but you have unlimited criteria essentially, unlimited discretion, as long as it meets those initial four criteria. Need the adequacy of existing services, capability of providing service by the district and the financial ability. You can approve it for whatever reasons you choose. So there's, there's a preference for not proliferation of government services, but providing the availability of government services under the statutory scheme. So I'd like also to address the taxation issue. This is not a property tax funded venture. This is a sales tax funded venture. As a matter of fact, healthcare services already are being provided in the Platte Canyon area by property taxes. Every time a member of the Platte Canyon Fire Protection District goes out on a non- emergency medical call, that's tax, those are tax dollars being used to fund non-emergency medical care. If you approve the service plan, judiciary approves the petition and the electorate approves the nation of the district. Those property tax dollars will no longer be used for those non-emergency matters. That's more money in, like, fire protection districts offers for mitigation efforts. Emergency responses on two eighty-five to vehicle incidents. Actual true emergency calls wouldn't be handled by the proposed health service district medical responses, such as a heart attack or fatal, near fatality responses of that sort or wildfire. Biggest concern, sure, for chief. There has also been significant concern paid to the specificity and peculiarity of financial plan, business case made for the district. Statute doesn't call for a business plan or business case for the district. Calls for a preliminary budget, general description of the costs of facilities to be provided. These are both thirty-nine, nineteen, one oh six, sub two, sub D and sub G. And I heard a concern raised that there would be perhaps conflict with Stride or other private service providers. That's actually addressed in the statute as well. So Title thirty-two, Article nineteen, Section one fourteen explicitly provides for the authorization to cooperate with existing governmental, non-governmental, private or profit and nonprofit entities providing similar services. So there would not be a conflict. There would be cooperation with existing service providers and any potential service providers of a private. Sure that wish to enter this service.
A point of privilege real quick, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, I'm not sure if the speaker is close enough to your mouth, but you're fading out quite a bit on some of your conversations there.
I'll stand closer. Is this better?
That's better. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me know. In addition, the statute specifically requires petitioners for a health service district to design the boundaries of the district to overlap with an existing taxing entity. That's why the shape of the proposed district is what it is. That overlap district is the school district, which is an existing taxing entity. So that's in compliance with the statute as well. As stated, um, none of the funding here is going to either take from or supplement county funding for any other services nor any other taxing entity and that's in compliance with thirty-two, nineteen, one thirteen, which is a requirement that the county not take dollars obtained by this entity for any purposes or vice versa. So there, that's to address the concerns that, for example, taxpayers in Goffey are going to be responsible for this unless they make a purchase in the proposed sales tax area, just like any other person traveling through the district. And as a final comment on the process, each, each division of the government is involved in this process. Your review of the service plan is essentially legislative in this, in this case, although it's quasi-judicial. Your approval and resolution approving the service plan is a necessary component for the petitioners then to go to the residents of the proposed district, get their signatures on the petition. Two hundred signatures or thirty percent of the proposed residents of the proposed district, whichever is lesser. That then is taken to the district court in Park County where the judge, the judiciary will review that for compliance with the statute. Review for your approval, your resolution approving it, and only then does it go to the electorate at large. So there was public comment about that process. You are the first step. There is a second step. There's a third step and really the fourth step is electing the board of directors for the service district who will implement the service plan in its particulars. And if the service plan in its particulars isn't sufficiently adequate to achieve its goals, there's a process for resolving that too, thirty-two, one, two oh seven. It's a material modification of the service plan. If this fails, there's a process for correcting that. So petitioners here have complied with all of their obligations. We ask now that you review the service plan, review the evidence that's been submitted, speak with your counsel, ask us any questions that you have and approve it. And if the service plan does not meet your approval, we ask that you take not the step of denying it, but rather your third option. Tell us what we need to change. We will change it. We will submit it to you. We will take it to the judge. We will take it to the electorate. Thank you.
Questions?
Benny?
Mr. Wood, how do you want to handle this? We, we are in the point now in our process of where we're going to ask questions would be Jermaine, I think, to start with you. I don't know what your preference is for answering our questions. It may require you to use some of your committee people, but it may not. So I'll leave that to your discretion.
Sure. I'm happy to be point for the questions and if I feel that I'm not the appropriate person, I'll defer to the members of the committee itself.
Fair enough. Any, any objection to that?
No objection.
Okay. I have one question basically, just a curiosity and I'll, I'll start it off with this one. The difference between the health assurance district and the health service district is what?
Yeah, so a health assurance district and a health service district are both under Article nineteen, but they provide different services. The health service district actually provides healthcare directly. The health assurance district provides avenues for obtaining health services. So that may be grant funding, that may be, uh, putting people into contact with actual service providers and that may be, um, coordinating between service providers and, for example, a health service district. What's proposed here is actual services provided via the district by contract or by direct, uh, employment.
Just as a follow-up from my, my point of view on that question, I was looking to find some, you know, easy definitive, um, descriptive differences. What I found out is basically health assurance districts, so generally hospitals. They're generating a central point or with comp, you know, contracts with other people, but the only examples I found of an assurance district generally involve a hospital of some kind.
And that may be, I have not looked into that specifically.
That's my first question. I'll, I'll open it up for that.
Would you like me to go next?
Mr. Gimmer, you have a thought?
And I'm just going to give you, I'm, I'm pretty direct to my questions, so they're not, uh, not, not very elaborated, but I will ask you, this is my very first question. And, uh, looking through the budget and how it's currently, um, set forth, why did the, did the, um, proposed district not ask for a half of a cent tax as it shows plainly in the current budget proposed that it would cover all of the costs?
Need to defer to the members of the committee on that specific factual question.
Mary Ann Waslasky, one of the committee people, I'll try to answer that. So yes, if you look at it from a one-year standpoint, it may cover what is the startup cost, but like any entity, you have to have some reserves. If we blow through all the tax revenue the first year, it would not be feasible or reliable enough to bring the income needed to sustain, um, any unexpected costs. Anything, when we're trying to bring providers in to be able to tell them there is this money, if you blow it all, I mean, we, at the end of the year, we're not at zero on our home budgets. At the end of the year, you're not at zero at Park County. At the end of the year, um, Land and Water Trust Fund has millions left in the, in the bank. So to ask a health service district to zero back down at the end of the first year is not, um, feasible. So that is why the one percent tax is asked instead of the half percent because the one percent is what would be needed to ensure that we could give sustainable care to the community, not just in the first year, but in all the years going forward.
Thank you for that. And just to follow up on that, um, in the, and you might as well stand there because you're gonna. So in, in your current budget, the twenty twenty-six, what you're proposing is your carryovers eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand. That's your carryover. That's all tax money basically coming and, and being carried over to twenty twenty-seven. Um, with that being said, if you did a half percent tax, your carryover would still be nearly five hundred thousand. Three, three, that'd be four, four hundred and fifty. I didn't write the actual numbers down. And then the following year, you show a carryover, uh, uh, one point five million for a carryover after, after everything is funded. So the, the, that, that portion of the budget is, uh, is slightly confusing to me in you would still have carryover at a half of the cent tax. So.
And they're not, there needs to be carryover, as I said. Um, you cannot zero out a budget. So the carryover is that sustainability, um, there will be potentially, I mean, if you look at a health service district, there will be other, hopefully, other healthcare initiatives further down the line. Let's get that mammogram bus up to the county to do, to, to conduct screenings for the people who can't access them. There are lots of different ways healthcare can be delivered. Stride continuing to do what they can do in Park County. I mean, obviously, members of our committee were instrumental in bringing Stride up. So we love Stride. We want Stride to continue. We begged them for information to give us so that we could hear what their plan was. So it's that kind of stuff. It's not just like buying an X-ray machine and then that's it. You know, there's going to be a lot of costs incurred and you need that budget balance to be able to, um, respond to the needs of the people in the most effective way.
Thank you. You got a question, Amy?
Yes, and also the pharmacy. Um, thank you. It, yeah, was not included in that, but it's in the plan as something, once funds allow, that we would have a small pharmacy included. So that would be part, like, that's part of that extra need that will come down the line.
My next question, apparently, I'm still gonna go. So in your in your statement in the last presentation, it was stated that the majority of the taxes would come from people who don't live in this county. What's the evidence to that?
Oh, Kim can answer this one. I know, come on up here. You have to. It wasn't that the majority. We said that it would come.
That brick and mortar is what we said, not Amazon, all that. Because I'm I am a business owner. And we calculated seventy percent of our sales were out of outside of eight oh, four, two, one, one of our stores because of the pass through. So we were talking about, we were specifically talking about the brick and mortar businesses.
Okay, so so you were talking about the majority of the taxes. As my dive into what I seen, it does not relate to outside of the outside of the county. A lot of taxes actually do come in from inside the county. That's why where my question of that evidence came from.
I don't understand your question.
So the the question that is basically when it was presented, and this is what I written down from from a quote was in your statement with the presentation, it was stated that the majority of taxes would come from people who don't live in the county. That's how it was stated. I just was looking for the evidence behind that because I don't see the evidence myself.
Okay. Yeah, well, I think that was come that came up in when you were talking about the brick and mortar sales. Because that's what that was referencing.
So brick and mortar sales are usually people outside. I mean, the majority of the business owners report that those are outside the four zip codes for brick and mortar sales. For home sales, obviously, for online sales, that's us. You know, we're we're bringing the stuff in to our homes, having it delivered to our houses. So that part of the tax would be supported by us.
So when it comes to brick and mortar, as I have families that work and manage multiple businesses within the county in brick and border. And they in are in the business is what we would call seeing people come in from outside of the county, such as fuel stations. They see the vast majority of their purchases of goods inside their store are still within the county, not necessarily outside the county. That's why my question was opposed that way.
Okay, so are you talking like loaf and jug? Because we don't have.
I'm talking Bailey self-serve downtown Bailey and loaf and jug as well.
Yeah. We did not get numbers from them, but we did hear from other business owners in the community that say that the majority of their brick and mortar sales are from out of. So I mean, yes, there there's going to be some that are home sales. And then, you know, our goods coming in that we're purchasing online. And then there's going to be the brick and mortar. So that's the distinction. Okay. Thank you for the question.
I'd like to ask the follow up to that question. So do you believe that that statement was disingenuous that that the majority of the tax being paid is going to be by people from outside the county?
I do not believe any of our statements are disingenuous. And I would say that perhaps the clarification, the nuance was maybe lost. I don't know, but I think that it was meant in good faith because we heard from business owners. And the chamber does support this. The business owners there do support this to go on the ballot. But what we heard was the majority of their sales are from people who are not in the district. It'll depend on the people who do online say, you know, online purchasing. That that will be a big part of it, but it that's also a piece that people can control. I mean, you can control if you want to order something online, or if you want to go pick it up somewhere in a brick and mortar. So that part is something that the people in the district will have absolute control over.
So have you done any? Do you have any estimates or calculations on how much of that tax will come from residents within the district? And how many, how many of these dollars, what percentage of dollars will come from the tourists?
I don't have an exact number for you, and I'm not sure it's relevant in the sense that people, when they go to vote for this, are going to look at their own spending habits and what they spend in the district and what they spend in online sales. And they will be able to make a choice on that. So where that tax money comes from, I think we're splitting hairs a little bit here, and I'm not sure it's really relevant to the statute or to the passage of this. Thank you.
That was just the the question. I I do have another another question here. And this is pertaining to more of the the proponents discussions that were that were stated. So I'm not sure if you got an individual that wants to speak on this. Most of the proponent statements in the in the presentation were stating the need as an ability to have urgent and emergency medical care. What type of urgent or medic or emergency care can be done at the clinic without further treatment at a hospital or urgent care facility?
I actually can answer. This is my, this is my field. In medicine, in especially in emergency medicine, we have classification, we triage. You would probably be able to talk about that at great length, as would you as a former army nurse. We have emergent, which is emergency, urgent and non-urgent. So to your point, anything that's emergent obviously is going to be EMS. And they will stabilize the patient and take them down the hill. Urgent, if the clinic's open, you know, Monday to Friday or whatever, if they do Saturday hours like Conifer, who knows? But urgent could be taken care of up at the clinic. Non-emergent, non-urgent, obviously, can be taken care of at the clinic. So it would it would allow the people in the area to access healthcare locally to address their non-urgent and urgent care. If it was truly emergent, I mean, someone can show up at the clinic, happens all the time at Conifer. Someone can show up at a clinic and they were maybe urgent when they got there. But now their health is degrading and they now slip into the next category, which is emergent. The clinic staff would be able to assist EMS in stabilizing that patient. Once they're emergent, they're obviously going to be transported. So does that answer your question? Or do you have a follow up?
And let me, let me tell you where that question comes from, as I have been a individual who's needed care because I work in the industry that was that way. And as simple as going to Connor from Medical Center was turned me away because of stitches that I needed. Okay, the stitches, the the wound is obviously deeper and more, and they didn't even have the ability to get me. As I was refusing transportation, they would not even do anything for me. I had to wrap my own hand up and leave to go to emergency care. What I'm stating is in a clinic like this, if it's not going to cover that type of purview or individuals in that type of emergency care, I just want the public to know that it that is not available at a clinic, that that it's for urgent and regular care.
Yeah, so I can't speak to why they did not do that. Your classification would have been urgent. It wouldn't have been emergent, wouldn't have been non-urgent. You would have been classified as urgent. And I don't know what their staffing was that day. I don't know what the, you know, there's a lot of circumstances that are around that. And that was your, obviously, that was your experience. That is not what I imagine. And again, we're going into this, I'm not an elected person on that board. I'm, you know, we we can speculate. And I think that's what the naysayers have problems with is that we can't say specifically, your stitches would have been stitched that day if you'd come into the clinic. But I can tell you that what the vision we have for this clinic is that, yes, they would have been. And I can't say equitatively a hundred percent, but this would be a clinic that would support non-urgent and urgent needs. And they would call EMS for emergent as needed, and then that person would go down the hill. But urgent care is part of that non-urgent and urgent classification, and that should be something that's covered in a clinic.
And I appreciate you going with that as that question just leads to the idea of it comes down to staffing, whether or not it can be take care of urgent type care. That that's what I heard you say as far as Connor from Medical Center may not have had the staffing that day.
Well, or 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 whatever. I don't know. I can't really explain to you why they didn't do that. But stitches are a pretty simple thing that could usually be covered at a clinic. I can't tell you that if a person needs stitches, they're always going to be referred down the hill. That's not going to be, that's not an expectation that I would presume based on the experience that you had.
And thank you for that. And you want me to keep going or you want a few questions?
I'll jump in on one. I want to just talk about the the plan itself, contents of the plan. And one provision says the district plans to to utilize a brick and mortar facility. And I see your budget delineates a expense to renovate the facility and capital outlay of equipment of total of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Please explain to me how that is going to cover the outfit of radiology with the requirements of what is needed for a building, a room to contain radiology equipment.
That was actually a question that we asked of, because the the current bill, well, we don't know where this is going to be, but there is space currently available that housed the previous clinic. It does not have the radiology in it right now. We looked at how much that would cost. We got an estimate from a contractor who does clinics on a regular basis. And so that number was an estimate based on their input of what it would cost to renovate the existing space that was there as an example. If that is actually the space that the future board would have a contract with, that was an example of what it would cost to renovate and make it up to speed for for X-ray and the radiology and the radiation that's produced from it.
Thank you for that. If you don't mind, can I follow up with that? So a as I know a little bit about contracting and contractors.
Yes.
You know, just putting together numbers myself and and knowing knowing how this works as being, it it looks like it's quite delinquent as I'm showing forty six point seven, five dollars per square foot minimum to do a radiology shielding inside of an of a building on top of some of the other features for a lab itself. I'm coming up with on my, on my, just to make it simplistic. When I, when I did the budget, I I came up with the cost of renovation by itself. HVAC, everything that needs to be done for lab and all all the all the fixtures and features that come with that in the tunes of around almost three hundred thousand dollars for a brick and border that's already up.
I will tell you that, yeah, no, I hear what you're saying. The clinic space is like well there. And the radiation requirements and the other renovations that would be needed, the electricity is already there. They added, there is a drop ceiling where all the mechanical, there was tons of space for mechanical. So it wouldn't require, I mean, there were, there was a lot of conversation about that. What I can tell you, because I'm not a contractor, is that this was a contractor who routinely does clinic renovations. And that was the estimate that was given. I can't, as an expert, I'm not, that's obviously not my field. But that was the number we we were given, and so that's the number in the budget. If it's under, if it's under reported and the actual number is going to be higher, well, then that's the reason why we need a one percent instead of a half percent. So, yeah.
Mr. Whistle, you want to ask one? I I've got one. We'll go to the timeline that you provided. And I would like to get clarification on the the asterisk that was brought up by somebody who who spoke today. Any provider coming from a clinic within a certain mile radius will depend on their current clinic contract, that's a parentheses, may be bound by a non-compete clause for a duration of time. Providers must re re-contract with insurance entities when setting up a new practice. This can take up to seven to eight months. Will you please clarify? Because if you guys are running a clinic and somebody else is coming up to provide some kind of specialized care, is that specialized care person coming up going to be restricted from being operate within your district?
There will be no restrictions in operating, which our lawyer responded to before. No one will be restricted from operating within their license, whatever their license to do and whatever their contracts are with. So this would never be something that would be imposed upon somebody. The imposition comes from their employer, not from the health service district. So the health service district would not place that upon them. It would be up to their practice and their license and who they're contracted with.
And why do you have that statement on your timeline?
Because go ahead.
Please.
So actually, this the statement would have been accurate up until about two years ago. The Colorado Legislature significantly modified the applicability of non-compete agreements, including in the medical field two years ago. And those are now highly disfavored and would not apply in this situation.
So should it be struck from the timeline?
I suppose it's conceivable that if someone were coming from out of state, that would still apply. But I don't find that it is a material inadequacy in the service plan myself.
Are you going to go again? Do you want to go, Dave? Okay. Go ahead. I have plenty of minutes that will follow up. This is, this is a one is kind of a struggle for me. This comes to the need of the facility. Okay. So and and this, this is, this is broke down into multiple different statements or or entities in which I can read here. So with the stride bus clinic on Tuesdays, we're seeing an average of around one point seven plus people per day or per week in in that in that entity. You guys are showing approximate visit of about are hoping for around twenty two people for per year, looking at eleven people or twenty two people per day and eleven people to start is what I'm seeing. Both of those numbers make sense, can make sense with the issue of, according to the the Northeastern University, January twenty twenty five, public trust in doctors has sharply declined from a favorable rating of seventy one percent to as of January twenty twenty four, in many cases dropping below forty percent. Okay, with this, more than half of the population has reported loss. And this is, this is a nationwide survey, by the way. With this, the half of the population has reported a loss of trust in medical professional, with many believing that doctors are prioritizing profit over care, particularly by promoting pharmaceuticals in exchange with for kickbacks. Given this content and looking at the historical patient numbers at Crow Hill Clinic during a time when trust in doctors was significantly higher, it is hard for me to believe that projected twenty two patients per day is even feasible. A more realistic estimate might be closer to two to two to four patients per day to start. And it will take time to, a long time to get the trust of the people. This highly, it, this is highly deeper issues and public trust and skepticism towards healthcare providers, which can be solved simply with the mindset of if you build it, they will come, does not hold water at this time. How do you propose addressing this larger challenge?
As an initial matter, I'll note that Title thirty two, one, two, oh, three requires that the findings of the Board of County Commissioners shall be based solely upon the service plan and evidence presented at the hearing by the petitioners and any interested party. It also references the planning commission, but that was not involved here and isn't involved in health service district service plan reviews anyway. Before I let the petitioner speak to the specific factual questions, also note that Congress has approximately thirteen percent approval rating. And yet each individual member of Congress has approximately an eighty percent approval rating in their own district. So a general response to your question would be that people like their own doctors. They don't like doctors. But I'll defer now for the more specific response.
I don't know if I have to say much more after that, but but I will go back to the stride thing where you said they were just seeing one point seven a day. We have to be really clear that the stride van that comes to Bailey cannot be compared to a brick and mortar clinic. Of Monday through Friday, brick and mortar clinic is a very different thing. It's like comparing apples to the whole fruit plate. It's like comparing apples to the whole fruit plate. And I, I go by this. It's like the same analogy of saying a bookmobile that comes to an area for four hours a, a week is the exact same as a brick and mortar library that would have all the services and books and resource materials needed for that community. A bookmobile, a bookmobile is wonderful for communities that don't have a library. A library is much better than a bookmobile. A brick and mortar clinic is way better than a van that comes up four hours a week. If you are transferring your care, let's say it's a dentist. You have established care with somebody, they're further away. If a dentist comes and says, I'm going to be here four hours a week, how likely is a person to transfer their care to a dentist? We did get a dentist that set up right as COVID hit, full practice. They are fully, um, they have full patient load and that is right there in Bailey. So if you, you build it, they will come. We stand by that. It happened with the dentist in Bailey. It would happen with a clinic in Bailey. If we have a clinic that's brick and mortar, they will come. It's different than a bus that comes up four hours a week. It's impossible to establish primary care and that trust with the doctor that we just talked about. When you don't even know if that van is going to be there four months from now. We cannot even get an answer when we asked whether they would continue that service or expand it. So we have to be really clear that comparing a part-time, only a few hours a week, mobile clinic to a brick and mortar is not the same.
I'll, I'll, I'll ask another one. Um, on page twenty-three of your plan, um, it says your goal is to, um, contract with a, um, uh, potential provider to provide services. But if you cannot find anyone to contract with, you are going to take this upon yourself um, and do it yourself. But I don't see that you've got two budgets to show how those two are going to happen because, um, you having a entity come in and situate their structure within a, a, a building that you provide is one thing. You guys creating that structure is a completely different thing. And you're going to need staff, you're going to need to hire doctors, you're going to need insurance, you're going to need everything that is brought, would be brought by a contractor. You'd have to do it yourself. And I don't, I, I don't see that, um, I, I think there needs to be two budgets to go with your decision tree of A or B. Because, um, I don't think it's, it's clear. Um, and people are being sold that it could be one or the other, but I don't see how you could make the second option work.
I appreciate that that's a genuine concern about the feasibility of the services provided by the Health Service District, but that is not what is required for the service plan submittal. It is a description of the proposed facilities to be established, maintained or operated. A financial plan showing how the proposed services are to be financed. All proposed indebtedness, of which there is none for this proposed district. And as a note there, I did have a conversation with your attorney previously about the issue of indebtedness, referencing the ten thousand dollar repayment. I just wanted to, I had in my notes that I should address that, that that is not indebtedness under the statute because it is not secured by the credit or taxing power of the proposed district. That represents a voluntary repayment obligation akin to maintenance and operations costs. Similarly, a general description of the estimated cost of acquiring or leasing land or facilities, acquiring engineering, legal and administrative services, initial proposed indebtedness, again, which there is none, and other major expenses related to the organization and initial operation of the district, and a description of any arrangement or proposed arrangement with any political subdivision for the performance of any services between the proposed district and in, and such other political subdivision, including form of contract to be used if available. So the level of detail that you're asking for simply isn't required by the statute. I understand certainly that it would be valuable, but that is not uh, what's called for here and it's not what's asked for by the, by the legislature of the petitioners.
Can I follow up with that, Mr. Wood? One of the things that has concerned me is when you look at the budget and we heard this, having been in our second year of this application. There was discrepancy on the amount of potential income, um, a year ago versus this year. It was eight hundred thousand dollars estimated a year ago and it's now one point two, almost one point three million based on different data that was provided in this application. I see that we know, we know that from the Land and Water Trust Fund, one percent sales tax, it generates approximately two, two point five million dollars a year. That's countywide municipal, uh, purchases and all the things across the county. We know that without the two municipals which are located in South Park, each service and are part of the South Park Health Service District. The difference in that money kind of confirms the fact that I thought the original number was too low. And I don't know the validity of the number for the one point two or one point three million. That more than likely would be predictably, um, increasing with acquisitions by people increased in population and so forth. One of the things that, that bothered me is if Plan A doesn't work and the district's not able to provide with a service provider or contract, a service provider, come year two, year three, year four, and we don't have service providers, then what happens? Where do those funds go?
Well, I, I hear at least two parts of that question, so I'll address the first part, which is that sales tax data is aggregated out by the state. Uh, and this data were, was taken from the overlap taxing entity information, which was the school district. So that data, at least for tax year twenty twenty-four, is accurate for collections in the taxing area, which will be the proposed service area. As for proposed alternative services and financial arrangements, I'll differ on that question.
So if the district has to be disbanded, if it doesn't get um, the clinic or whatever, if we don't get a provider, there is something in the statute, and so I will actually punt it back to him about when they're, how to disband, how to, um, do that. So there, the statute covers that. The, and I understand why that is a concern. However, let's look at the odds. Okay, we have ten thousand people. We would have hopefully a sales tax that would help support that consistent, um, funding to attract a provider. They were able to do that with some difficulty, but they have been able to do that here in Fair Play with the same sales tax. We have four times the people. It is unlikely that a provider would not be found it within one year or two years, whatever you want to say. It is highly unlikely that for some reason, Fair Play was able to get it with that same s- one percent sales tax. And Bailey with four times the amount of people can't. Um, I, I understand the concern. I'm not sure if it's playing the odds. I honestly believe, we, the committee, obviously believe that with ten thousand people and, um, some funding to help support it, we will be able to attract a provider to come and staff and, and run the clinic. It's really unlikely. I mean, I ask you to show me how, if it can be here in Fair Play, we would not be successful. I'd like to turn the question back on you actually on that and just say, how, what is it that you expect would happen with four times the population, same tax money?
Let me respond this way. When we look at, at some of the information in your application, you're basically predicting that you'll be able to provide, or you'll be able to contract the providers, whether that's internally or externally or a separate situation. We don't have evidence of what Fair Play's operating model is, and in this hearing, we're only supposed to hear from the evidence presented during this pro- this process. But I can tell you that the difference that I have seen from my observations with a fairly significant history in my life of my family being involved in healthcare from the business side in Cotwell County, is that there is no guarantee. If you have providers, which Black Canyon did, I was, and my family were purveyors of the Crowell Family Medicine when it was in there, guy named Frank Reed and Tom Sizing were our GPs for many, many, many years. And they made the business decision to move to Conifer because the existing facility, which is now the Crowell Bible Church, was not supportable. I don't know what the true reasons were. I don't know what the dollars and cents were. I have no way to know that. But they moved to Conifer and created the expansion of the then Conifer Medical Center in that area. So I'm concerned about the fact that there is competition. Have a, a support base, um, a clientele that would support that investment in that time. And so I say to the people that, the ten thousand people that are involved in Bailey of that estimate, where do you doctor? We doctor in Buena Vista. When our provider retired in Fair Play, which we had for thirty-some years, they retired at the end of their career and we were happy for them. And we made the conscious decision to locate our healthcare to the area that provided it, and that was Buena Vista. That's through part of the Rockies Regional Medical Center. Ironically, they're the same clinic provider that Fair Play is using right now. That arrangement with an existing network that is more than one community. Buena Vista, So Watch and West Cliff are satellite clinics from that H R R M C. Part of the Rockies Regional Medical Center. Fair Play has taken over the operations through H R R M C for that clinic. And there was some anecdotal evidence offered that the staffing level, or excuse me, the patient load level was not real significant. I have no way to refute that or support it, but I know when I go there for anything, there's generally not a lot of people in the waiting room. So I'm, I'm, I'm looking at trying to balance this with need. Yes, I think you can say that in ten thousand people, but we are no different than anybody else. We go out and we obtain the needs and the goods and the services we have. I would ask this question, is healthcare a right or is it a responsibility?
Well, you do have evidence in the record from the first part of this hearing regarding the funding and staffing of the South Park Health Service District as a director testified in support of. So that is in the record and you are entitled to consider that. In addition, the budget calls for TBD grants and foundation funding. Um, there are alternative mechanisms for funding aside from the sales tax. Those include the grants, those include patient fees, those include reimbursables. Of the questions there that I perceived, um, alternatives to full service at underfunding would be a reduction in services. And that would either be a non-material modification, which would just be a business decision on the part of the proposed district, or it would be a material modification of the service plan, which would come back to you under thirty-two, one, two oh seven. Alternatively, as was mentioned, there is a wind down process, the dissolution of districts. That's, I believe, section seven hundred of Title thirty-two. Again, that would come back to you. You would be participants in the wind down of the district, the dissolution of the district if it proved infeasible. So there are avenues here, alternatives to success. But what's the old saw? Fail to plan, plan to fail.
Did you want to respond to that or? No, I, I, I appreciate the comments, Mr. Wood, but I, I think in our perspective, when, when you look at this from the long term, with no guarantee, when we, I don't think we can guarantee anything, you know, it's all business management, philosophy, approach, location, business plan. But with all of those factors in, completed in there, the two, those ten thousand people apparently have made arrangements or for the majority, vast majority of those people, whether it's downtown or over here or someplace else, to seek the healthcare that they require or need. And I appreciate the fact that we're trying to add new professional opportunities to the Black Canyon area. But it's almost a, a case of too close, too far. And I've used this analogy before in property, so I'll, I'll use it in this way. If you look at Lake George, Lake George is about the same distance from the Colorado Springs metro area as is Bailey. And when you look at the business community in Lake George, if, you get this comment of it's, it's too far for one day and it's too close for more than, for less than one day. So they're kind of in this conundrum of people who come up to use our facilities and, and enjoy our beauty. And they, they come through that, but we're in this conundrum of where those people in Bailey who have either sought or received their medical care at another facility certainly are germane to come closer to home. Anything that could come closer to home would be advantageous if the care was adequate. But who in their likely mind would go from a consistent, satisfied care provider, wherever that may be, to come to an unknown factor in Bailey? What is the draw for that? How can that be overcome?
I would like to respond to that. You're presuming that because some people here have access to healthcare, that we're all going out to healthcare. There are lots of people who are not receiving healthcare in a, at all or in a timely manner where they can receive the screenings, they can receive the care they need so that their issues don't blossom into more expensive things. Our data shows two point five percent higher suicide rate than the state average. That means people are not getting care. Our data says twenty-six percent of the women on Medicaid in Park County are not are on, only twenty percent. One in four women who could get mammograms are not are only one in four are getting them, three out of four are not. That's an access issue. So when you say, well, we go way out here and we go, yes, some people do and they are able to get there. We work in the nonprofits. We are the safety net for our community because we are unincorporated and there isn't any. So we see and hear the people. That's why we're here. We see and hear the people that don't have healthcare or don't get to it fast enough or can't get to it. So I think it's fine to have your own personal experience and make that an anecdote. But our own personal experiences and anecdotes do not refute all the data in the plan. There is from at least eight different sources, data about healthcare access. Just because they have insurance doesn't mean they have a doctor. Just because they, they have a doctor doesn't mean they can get to them. So I think we're talking about a couple of different things here. And when we hear from people who say, well, you know, we don't need it, the data says otherwise. Data is hard data and our own anecdotes do not refute data from multiple evidence-based sources.
Thank you for that. Uh, do you want to continue on that or you mind if I ask a question now? Well, I would just like to make this, this, and it's not really a question, but a comment. I think the data the proponents have presented is in their light, is, is in their favor. They are using every angle and, and, and perceived benefit to, to champion their cause. I expect that. But on the other hand, is that realistic? Are those factors credible? Is there confidence in the numbers you're, you're providing? And I don't have a way to measure some of that. It's anecdotal. It's from sources you've. It's from sources you've represented. But on the other hand, I always like to do my own research and I always like to look at my own sources and that's just my comment.
And I would ask what your sources and your data are. Are they imperial evidence-based sources? And what data are you bringing to refute ours? We have strong data from multiple sources and we all know that people in rural areas have more poor health outcomes. There's reasons for all that, but we actually narrowed it down to state and county level. And actually, one of the surveys was done just in the Black Canyon area for qualitative data, obviously not quantitative, but qualitative, which is person input. But the hard data, we have both. We have qualitative, which is people's input, and we have quantitative, which are the hard numbers. Data doesn't lie. You can say, that's not my experience and that's great, but data is data. And unless you can bring multiple evidence-based empirical evidence to refute ours, I will go back to, as a scientist, our data is qualitative and quantitative. It is not anecdotal.
Would just remind the parties that we do have to remain in the record of what has been presented to the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Fitch. All I would say is that the data is your data and then I will just leave it there.
And I would like to respond to that. As a scientist, we are trained to look at all data, even the data we don't like. And we, that's why science changes all the time. That's why recommendations change all the time. We look at data, even the data we don't like, and then we consolidate it and make new new changes to whatever we're doing. This was not cherry picked data. This was data from multiple sources. We could go forever. The plan could be a hundred pages long if you want me to get all the sources, but as a scientist and and a nurse, we are taught to look at in statistics. We are taught qualitative, quantitative data and the difference and how to discern. And if we see something that doesn't make sense to us or we don't like, we include it anyway. So I refute what you said about that. I'm going to tell you this is good, strong data.
Other questions?
Yeah, so beans, you're going off data and I appreciate, I am a data person myself. I think that is very, very important. And I can see where some of the data that you guys were presenting, I can see the validity in what you guys were saying on that data. This, I'm going back to the budget data. This is very confusing to me. Okay. You, so the South Platte Health that was presented to us with their expense of 2022 states that their cost for district services was 652,715. With your statement that you just made, the service area is four times the personnel as that one. You have a $700,000 budget line item. I'm coming up with 2.6 million. That's a huge disparity.
We must remember that there's fee and reimbursement. So when you talk about ten, we talk about four times the amount of people. That means four times the reimbursement fees, four times other sources of income. So I hear what you're saying, but that we are basing it on a proven model that's successful in our county and we are going with those numbers, but also knowing that we also have four times the population. So instead of two patients a day or whatever you think might be happening, we would have more patients being seen and served by the Health Service District.
And I thank you for that. And going off of that, and the reason I ask it in that mannerism is the budget seems off in that mannerism based off of you're going directly off of what South Park is doing rather than what your proposed plan is doing. And your proposed plan that you presented to us shows a substantial more individuals, yes, more income, but your budget is saying that you're only going to spend $700,000 on that?
And that is an estimate based on first year opening a clinic. Yes.
Okay.
Other questions for us?
I'm, I, go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, in, just to try to, just because we're talking data and you guys leaned on the strategic master plan, though you quoted off of draft plan, not the final plan. But when you guys did your, utilize your data and did your calculations, did you add into that the fact that in our, the strategic master plan, eighty-four percent of the people work outside the county? And so that is why so many people utilize services outside the county and shop outside the county and do all their other things because they do that while they are usually down the hill or over the pass or wherever it is they work. And so, you know, I just want to try to make sure that that was contemplated or not.
Absolutely. But I would ask, when you're feeling sick or you are injured, are you at work? You're at home. You're at home. So let's bring the healthcare where we live.
Both.
Well, you don't go to work sick, I hope. Well, okay, as a nurse, I would say I would disapprove of that. But, but I mean, let's look at that. When people are sick or injured, are they staying at work or are they going home? They're home. So I think we're talking about a couple of different things there.
You have a few more questions there? So Mary, I really appreciate your desire to talk and have discussions on these hard questions. These are very important questions, I think, that we all should, you know, should look at with what was presented. I do have a question and this is pertaining to one of the proponents' discussions of the last meeting and if it holds any validity. And what I mean by that is the intention of putting this through on an off year for a special election, does that come to the pertaining of uneducated voters? That's the intention?
That was not said by anybody on our committee. That was, that was, that was a comment from public comment. And so to place that back on us is unfair.
I, that wasn't my intention. I was just checking to see as it was made part of the comments.
And I would, I would prove it by saying, we went through this last year. We thought we were going to be on last year's ballot and we were denied. So that would, that would offer proof that that is not our intent. We are here this year because we were denied our process last year.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
I have a question. It's about the cost of the election. If this were really successful and this were placed on the November ballot, who pays for the election?
So the petitioners pay for the election and that's under the current proposed service plan. That's a reimbursable by the district. So approximately, and this is, this is just, the budget calls for, I think, $25,000 for an election and that's in accord with my expectations and my experience for a district this size. Male ballot election because it's a table issue, but it would be coordinated with the county. So there would be other elections going on, just kind of getting far afield, but there's probably going to be a lot of 5.25% property tax waiver elections on the ballot this year. So it wouldn't surprise me if there's even a school district election that's going to have a single ballot that covers this entire area. So expenses might be lower.
That's a fair comment, Mr. Wood, but I think when we, we were talking at CCI about we are not aware of any statewide referred measure by the legislature that would instigate a November, in an odd number of year, election November of 25. We have learned through our clerk, although it's not any testimony, but she's not available to do this, but she'll be able to support it, that the district, as you mentioned, would be the, would have to enter a contract with the county clerk to perform the election if it was so ordered. And those costs would have to be borne by the district. There is no district so far.
Right. There is, there is a formation committee. Correct.
So there would be money available to provide your estimate of 25,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Which would subsequently be paid by the district as a repayment. So yes, the short answer is both. The district will ultimately bear the expense of the election. The district will not front the cost of the election. The petitioners will.
And in that, in that scenario, let's say that for some reason that the election was not successful, there would be no reticence on the payment of that because that, as I understand the clerk, those agreements have to be done and those deposits are done in advance of the election.
Yes, I think the IGAs, well, it wouldn't be an IGA here exactly, but those would be due in September, just like the $500 fee for review of the service plan. That's a cost of trying.
I appreciate that. And I just wanted to raise that question because if we're doing it, an individual election for just RE1, in this case, the boundaries of RE1 for the Health Service District, that would be a special election, well, not a special election because it'd be in the general, but it would be borne by the district or the county. There's only two places that could come from. And we're just not anticipating any election in November of 25 outside of this application.
There, I don't know. I, I don't, none of my districts currently have adopted resolutions for a November election, but given the special session last year, I am anticipating that there are going to be property tax waiver elections, including in Park County.
I would, I'd agree with you. We don't know.
Yeah, we'll find out in August.
And just for the record, I don't see in the financials that were provided to the county that line item costs for the election.
That was my question. Thank you.
Would that be something that the district would be willing to?
Absolutely, we'd be willing to add that in if that's what you would require of us. I will also say that there are going to be school board elections this year in our district. So we do know that there's at least that if there isn't a state ballot issue, but we also know that for sure there's school district. So there will be something else on the ballot.
As of now, we don't know for sure. I mean, there may not be any contested races in the school district. There may be one candidate for each seat up, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there. We've had school district elections canceled because of a lack of participation or candidates. That's all.
Got it. Thank you for that clarification. Other questions, concerns?
Just so, so just to make sure I understood right. Yeah, in looking at the budget, I don't see an election expense put in there. There, you add the line item.
We're happy to put that in.
All right. Thank you.
I'll note as a clarification that I was interpreting that as the administrative expenses under section eleven, but that we are happy to make that clear.
I think, Mr. Wood, as long as you've accounted for an election expense within your budget, that's comforting.
And along with that election expense, I'm getting with the clerk to find out the number, what that might be.
I'm sorry.
With that expense of the election, finding out actually what that number really is.
Oh, from the clerk.
From the clerk.
Absolutely. I mean, we'd have to work with the clerk for all of this. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yep.
So, Mr. Woods, did, were you referencing the district man, let's see, the district services line item in the budget? Or because that's the only, that, and there's legal fees, are the only two line items I see that if you thought it had already been covered.
Right, so I'm referring to on page 27 of the service plan, estimated cost of land facilities and professional services. So it is anticipated that the initial district requirement for engineering, legal and administrative services is budgeted at the amount of $100,000 for the year 2026. So that's where my understanding that it is a repayment of the district obligation. The election services would be rolled into the administrative part of that.
Okay, but that's not delineated in the budget line?
It's not, no. But I'm clarifying where I obtained my understanding.
Okay.
And just point of reference, there wouldn't be other administrative, I mean, the board does not get paid. So the board, the board, the elected board members don't receive administrative payment. They are not paid. They are volunteers. So that number would, you know, we can clarify it for election, but that is all, that was all part in there.
That raises a question with me about the five people proposed to be seeking election if the proposal comes to fruition. Do we have any idea who those five people would be or others than the five people? Does the committee have a preferred slate?
We don't have a preferred slate. We have people who might be interested, but that is not a requirement of the statute at this time.
I'm not asking you for a requirement. I'm just asking you if you have a preferred slate and who would those people be?
At this time, I am not prepared to present names. That is not something that's required right now, but there are some people who have expressed some interest. It would be five elected by the people. There might be others that want to come forward after this hearing and throw their hat in the ring and we don't have like a slate prepared, if that's the definitive answer for your question.
Whatever.
Yeah, there's no slate prepared.
I was just curious.
Yeah, no, because we're really trying hard to be, you know, we're, we're nonpartisan, we're neutral, trying very hard not to tell people like, this is going to be your slate. People can come forward. I mean, it's a democracy. They can come forward and do that.
The reason I ask the question is really going to come down to those individuals. What decisions are made? If it's successful, if the voters say yes, if we say yes, the checks unbalanced in this is the Board of County Commissioners, right, wrong or indifferent? It's up to us to make the determination, is this worthwhile and germane and beneficial to the people proposed in the district? That's why we're here.
I'm sorry, I haven't had, you know, time to go through the most recent evidence and I don't know if I will have time.
Yeah, we just came off of three days at our Colorado Counties Inc. And so we, there's, there's been a lot sent to us over the last week. So I have no more questions, have not had a chance to review probably the last public comment that's come in over the last week. Maybe I may not have gotten it all, but I have no more questions based on today and our last hearing.
I have one. There's been reference made to the South Park Health Services District's budgets and so forth. I haven't seen any numbers from them. Do you folks have access to any of their data? And would you be willing to share that with us?
There is testimony in the record. The documentation is not presently part of the record. We are happy to provide that. That's subject to cora. That's something that can be obtained.
Well, I didn't want to, I mean, I looked for my research and it wasn't available easily online to their website. I was just curious if you had information that you could share from their budget?
Only the testimony of their director.
Okay, that's fine.
And our own understanding of their finances.
I just think it'd be germane to see the difference or the similarity of the numbers of income and the distribution of those dollars. That's all.
As a note, there are two statewide ballot measures presently.
There are proposed ballot issues, but I don't believe anything's met the ballot yet. We're way early in the calendar.
Two statewide ballot measures were certified. One is a state retaining revenue from system. The other is tax
Okay, well, that's information we didn't have. Thank you.
I do have in our file, the South Park Health District's financials were sent to us by them or by, I believe by you guys. At least it's in the file that was sent to me.
I will look. Thank you. Counselor? I think we're to the point of
I think we're to the point of being done, first questions, unless there's any more questions from my peers.
And just a last edification on that, 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 what was sent was for year twenty twenty-two.
Um, I just full of fair disclosure, I have that information from twenty-two because I went to their board meeting and asked for it. So I have their audited numbers, I was just looking for something after that as well.
Mr. Kimmer, was that attached to a public comment received or how was?
That was attached to a public comment received.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from the board?
No, I have no more questions.
Okay. Counselor?
At this time, if you all have no more questions, we can either proceed to deliberation. Or um, state statute allows for, um, like we've already discussed. Um, the board to continue for not longer than thirty days, you still have nine days on that. So if you all would like to review the record um, and come back next week, Wednesday would be. That date that we would have to come back, um, that is also an option, so those are where we are now.
Great, thank you for that. I, I want to comment for the record, not necessarily to you, Mr. Wood, but our, our attorney has provided us in memorandums and supporting documents. For the criteria needed for approval or disapproval and we appreciate that, that is not something we had in the prior um, twenty twenty-four application. Um, outside of what the statute required, and so we, I appreciate that from our counsel.
And, and I would like to move that we continue the hearing on the service plan to Wednesday, June eleventh. At three o'clock pursuant to CRS thirty-two dash one dash two oh two one A. For board deliberation and board motions and board comments, um, it's six o'clock. Um, I left Keystone um, at eleven thirty this morning, have not had lunch. Um, I've got a lot to read, I want to listen to the recordings of this meeting and the meeting, um, the, the first hearing we had. Um, just to make sure that everything is in file and when my blood sugar starts getting low, the brain doesn't function as well as it should. And I think they'd be better off um, letting me pile through all of my notes. Um, and have a fresh brain for deliberation next week.
Proper motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, proper motion and second, I, I appreciate Commissioner Mitchell's motion because um. The mind will only absorb what the ludius maximus will stand. And I would prefer to have the opportunity, as she's mentioned, to listen to the both recordings. Look at all of the in evidence and in public comment we have and come back at this with a fresh approach next Wednesday.
Absolutely, and I agree with that as well as there has been evidence that was just presented today uh from Rocky Mountain Rural Health as well as. Um, several emails that came in prior to this meeting that would be entered into evidence as well. I, I have not had a chance to look at.
Okay. It's the pleasure of the board, call the question, those in favor of vote by saying aye.
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 Both same sign, so we will continue this to next week at three P M for deliberations, discussions and decisions.
As a point of clarification, the continue, the continuation of the hearing is for consideration of the evidence, deliberations. And determination, should we anticipate that there would be a continuation of the Q and A session or? Any request for additional information from the?
I would say there may be on my side as there's new evidence that has been presented. Um, I have not had a chance to go through it all yet.
I think, Mr. Wood, just to be fair, I don't think we would take that off the table, I wouldn't say that we would propose that we would have questions, but it's possible.
I just want to make sure.
Fair, you bet.
Yeah, anyone necessary is available.
Absolutely, we appreciate that. I want to thank everyone here, all those who've taken the time to participate, written, oral, Zoom, in person for the trip. And thank you all for that very much, we appreciate you, your time and your attention and your passion, we do. Is there any other business to come before the board? Oh, we have public comment.